Good evening, everyone. I am Kim Bazan. I'm a Mentor School District individual. I live here in Mentor. And I've been to many of these meetings.
Excuse me, can you restate your name? I didn't catch it, please.
Kim Bazan.
Thank you.
Thank you. Currently, I homeschool my children for many reasons that are happening in this world today. There's a lot of hate going on in this world. And just coming to these meetings in itself, I've felt a lot of that hatred happen, the divide happen. I'm not quite sure why it's happening. We're here to really be at a school that's supposed to focus on education, really, which means your math, your science, your history, your health. Not grooming, not providing curriculum that's going to persuade a child of the age of sixes' mental state when they're just developing that mental mentality and growing up. And I am a woman of faith, and I love everybody. I am a person that has many in my life of all likes, all diversities, all different sexual orientations. And just because I am a Christian doesn't mean I hate those individuals. But coming to these meetings, I felt from others, a hatred towards me stating that I should take my children to a private school when, in reality, we are here. I grew up with a group called Project Love, not CRT. Project Love's about an act of kindness, having everyone come together, not providing what someone's sexual orientation is, not providing what someone else believes in, whether it's their faith that's different. We're here to come together, not to divide one another. And I truly believe with the curriculum that's happening, what you want to see in CRT, it's not what the media is showing you. It's different from what the media is showing you. If you actually do your research, it is really a hatred curriculum. And you might disagree, but when you really see, if you've looked into Project Love, if you looked into those types of curriculums that we all grew up with at a younger age, not what's coming up in the modern day today. It was based on kindness, based on still even God-given rights to being just ethical. And I'm seeing a lot of our morals going down the ground. And I really believe that we need to just get back to going off with the last gentleman that spoke, going back to the basics and not going into a curriculum that's going to really change the minds of our youth. And it doesn't mean by me saying this that I am not appreciating everyone for who they are or what they are, because we are all here to love one another. But we have to stop this divide. We have to stop this hate for one another, because every time I come to this meeting, there is a banter back and forth. And I'm just here to say that we have to come together in some way and stop this banter. And our curriculum definitely needs to go back to the basics. So whatever you believe should go in the curriculum, I believe is wrong. We shouldn't talk about those different sexual orientations. My six-year-old will not be here in the school district if we talk about those things, because he's not of an age that he can do that. He has to be 18 and figure it out.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Melanie Majikas. I live on Birdie Lane. I'm the parent of two Mentor graduates, a longtime volunteer in the schools. And my kids did both graduate from Mentor High School. Speaking regarding the selection of the books for independent classroom reading, I just want to applaud the board and the curriculum director for choosing this company and for providing a variety of books that students can choose to read. This is a choice that students can make. I heard a wonderful quote yesterday from an educator named Dr. Rudine Sims Bishop. She talked about the value of books for children, and I'll just paraphrase what she said. She said that "books can serve as mirrors, as windows, and as sliding doors." They serve as mirrors when they reflect a child's own lived experience. They're windows when they allow children to see the experiences of others. And they're sliding doors when they actually enable a child to put themselves into the experience of the book and perhaps into the experience of another person. And all of these ways of reading are valuable, both seeing oneself portrayed in a book and seeing how people who are very unlikely are portrayed in a book. We really owe it to our children to allow them the freedom to experience this so that they can learn and grow. I find it interesting that people who talk so much about freedom and freedom of expression are actively trying to suppress the freedom of other parents to allow their children those experiences in school. Parents who want to strictly monitor their own child's reading, they're welcome to send books to school with their children that they approve of, but we don't have any right to take that away from other families. The freedom to read is an essential freedom, and I appreciate that the board and the curriculum director see that a diversity and variety of books is essential to this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm April Flag. I reside at 6181 Cambridge Park Drive. I'm going to side with what lovely, I don't remember your name said, but the banter back and forth is absolutely ridiculous for parents trying to raise children and trying to raise them to love each other and to get along. I don't think that saying that I don't think that certain material should be taught in a classroom is the same as telling a parent that they are not allowed to parent the way that they want. These are public schools. There are multiple religions, multiple different backgrounds, multiple different generations going to these schools that they are learning everything. Saying that, no, these are not appropriate for children of this age collectively, is not preventing anybody from parenting the way that they want. Now, that being said, I do not think that any more sexually explicit material or anything like that should be introduced into the schools. And if you guys are planning on going with the company that recommended the book George that you said was not acceptable, then I don't think that we can put our trust in the board as a whole anymore. That's all.
My name is Mary Jo Stack. I live on Independence Drive. I have two children that graduated from Mentor, and I've been involved in Mentor schools for 15 years, 20 years, close to that. First of all, I want to bring up the fact that somebody brought up Common Core. Common Core is not a curriculum, and it was brought together by the National Governors' Association in 2010 by Republican and Democratic governors. So let's get that out of the way. I will say that my children learned about World War II, yet they have not invaded Poland. My children read Harry Potter. They have not become wizards. My children became well-rounded, intelligent citizens, which is what public education is for, to create good citizens. Many here complained about masks and closing of schools, but are perfectly content now with wanting to take their children out or homeschool them. Public funds belong to public schools, not to private schools, that can deny anyone of their choosing. Schools like government are not a business. They don't make money. Their product is lives, not cogs. If you teach both sides, will the kids also learn both sides of 9/11, or do we only sympathize with the Nazis? This is the gripe du jour. I don't know what problem they're going to come up with next week, but I hope that we'll be able to understand that they do need to learn both sides. If your children are going to become good citizens of this country, they need to know both sides of the story.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Porter, Mr. Wade, President Briner, members of the board. I'm Bambi Vargo. I live in Mentor. I'd like to present two comments in support of the IDR books. First, in the June 26th Plain Dealer, there was a report from the Washington Post, quote, "U.S. continues to get older and more diverse," unquote. This information is based on data from the U.S. Census Bureau. This is clear evidence that the school district needs to continue to support diversity, equity, and inclusion in all aspects of the curriculum, including by accepting the IDR books. The population of the United States is changing. We need to prepare all our students to be successful citizens in a new world, and the inclusive books in this collection will do that. Secondly, I'd like to share a personal story from my teaching experience about the power of diversified literature to impact the lives of marginalized students. In late November of 2016, President Obama was preparing to leave the White House. I was teaching at Boulevard Elementary School in Cleveland Heights. One morning, I escorted three fourth-grade students to my classroom, two girls and one boy. Two students were black, one student was white. As we walked through the library, one student noticed this book, "First Family," and asked if they could look at it. And to be transparent, this book is not part of the IDR collection, but it is an example of diversified, inclusive literature. For the next 20 minutes, I had the privilege of listening to students discuss the first black president of the United States. They dreamed about Michelle Obama running for president, and they did not stop there. They even imagined daughters Sasha and Malia each becoming president one day, too. They were dreaming of an Obama dynasty. For my black students, this book was about the first black president, became a mirror for them to see themselves and to dream about all the possibilities ahead of them. For my white student, this book became a window for her to understand the challenges faced by the first black family to live in the White House. And for the girls in my class, this book became a mirror as they looked at First Lady Michelle Obama, an accomplished attorney and spokesperson for many causes, and imagined what great achievements may lie ahead of them, too. I urge you to accept the IDR books. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Jeannie Kincaid. My family's lived in this community for 36 years. I have three kids that graduated from Mentor High School. This is going to be short and sweet. We pay our taxes. It is the school's job to educate our children in subjects including math, reading, writing, geography, history, and all the subjects they need to learn. It is the parent's job to teach morals and values, not yours.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me an opportunity to speak. My name is Jerry Serino. I am the state senator for the 18th Senate District, which includes a vast majority of Mentor. And I'd like briefly to just talk about both subjects that came up tonight. First one is House Bill 99. And when we passed that bill a few weeks ago, it was, and there was a lot of confusion about what it was. And it is, I just thought I'd offer some explanation as to what the bill is about. I think the fact that you're going to pass a resolution not to opt out of the program is perfectly fine. But I do want to say that it was permissive and that school boards have the option of whether to accept the protocol or not. I know that in the 18th Senate District, which is Portage County, half of Georgia, and two-thirds of Lake County, I did not expect many school boards to actually opt into this, because we have, in those counties, we have a very vibrant sheriff's office in all three counties, and we have very large police departments with SWAT teams, et cetera. But one of the reasons why we passed that bill was because many of the rural parts of Ohio simply don't have the kind of proximity to their sheriff's deputies and sheriff's departments and police departments that can respond to school situations. And it is those school systems that were asking for the state legislature to act on this and to give them the opportunity, if they wish, to develop methods that would provide proper protection for the schoolchildren in Ohio. So again, it's totally permissive. The legislature did not require this to be the case. And Mentor decides not to do it. That's perfectly fine. That represents the safety of the community. I would certainly stand behind that. And very briefly, on the second topic that has been talked about mostly tonight. I haven't read these books and seen the materials specifically, but I just will say something that I sent to in a meeting a few weeks ago with a number of superintendents from the three counties that I represent, and that is that I really would like to see school boards, such as actions tonight, making decisions in cooperation with parents on these very important subjects. I'd much rather have these issues dealt with locally than to have laws passed in the State House. And all of these subjects are very controversial. I would just ask the board here in Mentor to listen to your parents, try to make the right decisions, and let's remember that the focus is on teaching the very basics, certainly to our children. We are behind in Ohio as a result of COVID, and we are lagging in creating jobs, careers for students to find jobs in the job market. And we need to focus all of our efforts and all of our opinions, certainly on making sure we're getting the very best basic education to our children here in Lake County. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator.
Hi, I'm Ann Anderson. I'm representing LGBTQ allies tonight. My three kids go to the school system. I'm coming here every month because I don't, people don't understand that there's LGBTQ kids in the school. They're not going to go anywhere. I don't care how many people you bring with you. I'm not going to go anywhere. Everybody, I have so many people behind me and supporting me, so I really support you guys having the books, because it's super important. There's so many children that are LGBTQ. Their parents might not know because of reactions like you're getting from the people on the other side of the room that think it's not okay to be gay, or trans, or whatever the case may be. So, yes, it is. Every month, I come here and I hear about how horrible it is to talk about, talking about being gay in front of children. What's wrong with it? There's gay people. Get over it. There it is. No, no, and I'm not going to listen to any moral character things from Jerry Serino or any of his grandchildren with a reason my kids had to leave St. Mary's. So I'm not going to listen to that. His grandson, who just graduated from...
Excuse me, excuse me, Ms. Anderson. You need to make sure you're addressing the board.
I'm not listening to you. I'm just from that. What about, I'm speaking.
And please, let's have respect for the speaker. Thank you.
So every month...
Please, please, we've asked, we've asked the speaker to address the board, and we've asked the audience to please let the speaker speak. Thank you.
Yeah, or they could go.
I understand.
They need to go. Or I'm going to go, and then I'm going to bring everybody with me that supports us next time. This is crazy. You removed my husband the last time. These people keep interrupting me. That happened the last time. You said you weren't going to tolerate it. So they need to go.
That's right. They've been warned.
They need to go.
Please continue.
They need to go. No?
They've been warned. Please continue.
Excuse me. Sir. Excuse me, sir.
It's time. It's my time. It's not yours. I'm sick of listening to this garbage every month. I'm not even supposed to be here, but I have to come up here because I get a notice at the Wednesday that they're upset about a book with two moms that are gay or whatever the case may be. Next week, it'll be something else. It's always something. It's 2022. What are we doing here? Again, the same speech here I am, there they are, it's going to go back and forth, we're going to get nowhere. What if we put some positivity into this? What if we actually did something for our students instead of came here and said, "We don't want to do this for these students, or these separate students, or these, and we're going to segregate everybody"? Let's not do that. Get it together. If you mean you want to get it together, then let's meet together. I will meet with you. That's what, that's the difference, is I will talk to you. Nobody has come to me to talk to me about anything.
Please.
I'm Linda O'Brien. I live on 5842 Tanner Court, Mentor, Ohio. America is a land of individual rights, and we honor all people's rights. The fact is, when I was growing up, we used to talk between our parents, not the school, about our private parts, key word being private. It's no longer private. You are taking it into the schools inappropriately, and as I have said before, we are not co-parenting with you. You need to stay out of the lives of our children from a moral standpoint. We can handle that. You can't seem to handle the basics, including cursive writing, including basic reading, writing, and arithmetic. Look at the scores that Mentor schools are getting. It's abysmal. I encourage you to please go back to basics. It's not anything about disliking what these people do. Their business is their business. Who they sleep with and how they sleep is none of my business, and I'm not judging them. I don't care. But I do care about how you take their approach and put it in the face of our children inappropriately. They are young. They are just being molded. The morals that we want them to live by are our morals, not the school board's and not our neighbors' or anyone else's. Please, honor the fact that we have our individual rights, and we have our liberties, and we want you to leave our children in our homes to be grown up and raised according to our values, the same values, I should mention, that founded this country, this great exceptional country that we need to honor and stand by in all ways. And board, I recommend and encourage you that if you want us to pay our taxes to this school, if you want us to vote for your levies, then reconsider your actions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I am Lindsay Wall. I live at 7250 Beattie Drive in Mentor. I have, for the career, a kindergartner and a second grader. First off, I would like to thank the board for listening to us, for listening to how diverse this crowd is, for listening to how different everyone is, and how everyone in this room believes in something different. There's a lot of diversity going across this entire room, and I think that you have done a phenomenal job listening to everybody and everyone that's not here as well, because while there's a large crowd here tonight, obviously Mentor Schools is giant, and the parents make up a very, very, very large number. And just because they're not here doesn't mean they don't get an opinion. So while I do agree with Mr. Serino about involving the parents' opinions on certain subjects, I don't believe that doing it just at a meeting where only a small number of the parents for our entire school system are able to attend is appropriate to do it that way. I feel that as you guys do your job with due diligence every time, you guys have listened to the parents, and that's why you have brought this to the table. Which brings me to the point of thank you for not teaching this to our kids. Thank you for creating a safe space and allowing educators to make our kids feel comfortable enough to come to them and express who they are, tell them their secrets that maybe they don't feel comfortable enough talking about at home. You've created a diverse school system where these teachers are incredible, and the students actually feel like they can talk to the teachers about what's going on inside of their mind. You didn't create a class that is specifically for these topics. These books are not being taught to our kids. They are not being assigned or graded on. You're literally just providing materials in a classroom for the kids to choose from. So thank you. Everything changes. Everything needs to evolve. As far as Colin Kaepernick goes in the book, these kids that will have access to this book don't look at Colin Kaepernick as the guy who knelt down on the field. They look at him as an athlete, if they even know who he is. It's just a children's book. But the news, adults, we watch the news. Yes, we all heard what he did. Some agree, some don't agree. That's, that's a parent thing. That's an adult thing. These kids reading this book, which I will be honest, I have not actually read that book, but it is a children's book, and these children don't know who he is. They see an athlete. Again, thank you very much for taking the time and listening to all of this. I appreciate you guys and respect you.
Thank you.
I'm Lynn Mazika. I live in Pine Gate here in Mentor. My husband, my two children, my three grandchildren, all attended Mentor schools and got wonderful educations. And I have been able to see in the times that I have been involved with having students in Mentor, the change and the diversity in our culture as a country. And it is good to see that our schools represent those same changes and diversity that we see in our country. Our country has changed. It's evolved. Some of us are a little more concerned about it than others. Some are a little afraid of it, and I can understand that. It's hard sometimes to accept what's new. We need to help our kids understand our world and the world of others around them that are not the same as them, and to let them know that there is a world out there so that they can critically think about things in addition to being able to read and write and do math. They need to know their history and the history of the other people in their country and in the world, and these books help us do that. Thank you for doing this. Thank you for presenting these books. And I also want to thank you for such prompt action on taking a stand on Mentor House Bill 99 and presenting that this evening. I'm pleased to see the reaction so quick. Thank you again very much for all you do for our kids.
Thank you.
My name is Roger Jewell. I live at 7418 Hart Street, Mentor. Raised six kids, put five of them through Mentor schools. We're putting the sixth one through Mentor schools now. I've been coming to these meetings for the last about eight months. We got involved when all the big mask stuff was going on. I'm sorry to say, and I repent, and I say I'm sorry for not being involved in school board meetings for the last 30 years that I've had children in school systems. I wish I had. One thing I'd like to make clear, if you went, if you go back through the last eight meetings, I think you're going to be hard-pressed to find anybody saying anything about any groups here. I've said it before and I'll say it again, no kid should ever be bullied for who and what they are. They're trying to find who and what they are. But no kid should be forced by a teacher who's supposed to educate to accept something that maybe goes against their rights and their ideas and their beliefs. It's not a teacher's job to teach my kid anything but reading, writing, arithmetic, history, whatever you want to call it. We don't pay athletes to teach our kids. Athletes are paid to entertain our kids. They're not role models. They're athletes that entertain people. These books, I have no idea why these books are being forced on young kids that have not, cannot make decisions on their own yet. It's not right. The sex education beginning in kindergarten is absolutely appalling, and I will stand as a father, as a parent, as a God-fearing man, and I will oppose that until I have no breath left in my lungs. We cannot do that as a school system. Cannot. And I would ask, and I would like to ask, that the board would start listening to everybody. And I think there's a big group of people that are being completely ignored while these books and all these politically-charged agendas are being forced on our kids. I have no idea where that falls under education, but I don't believe in it. My wife and I will raise our kids the best way we see fit. We appreciate you sticking to education. We appreciate you being transparent and telling us what you're going to do in the classrooms and not hiding things. And we know there are things being hidden. Please, for the love of God, listen to everybody that's trying to say, hey, we want the best for our children. And I'm not standing here saying that you don't, but there's definitely some things that are being done that don't indicate that people are looking out for the best for our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
I haven't seen him yet.
I'll tell you in a minute.
Robert Gandy, resident in 5462 Wickford Lane in Mentor.
Robert Gandy, resident in 5462 Wickford Lane in Mentor. My children did go to Menter Schools, I'm a Menter High grad. And I want to tell you that it was very diverse in my time and that was twenty-seven years ago, hard to believe. But I want to thank you for all the efforts that you've done and things that you've taught me and ultimately lead to my success where I'm at today. I do have family members, coworkers and friends that are part of LGBTQ. I went to school with members here. I think things are very diverse. I would caution the board against accepting anything that's controversial or may create more confusion. Unfortunately, I've had to deal with children in the school system and outside of the school system that have been victims or friends of suicide in the school system. So I respectfully ask that you strongly consider what you're looking at and evaluating and that you find things that steer away from values that are reserved for family members. Unfortunately, some of the decisions that I've made over the years, my son is a Menter Schools child that doesn't know how to sign his name. So that was a mistake, obviously you live and learn. But the point of this is that I work with police officers that are leaving at very large numbers. And if we're concerned about, you know, school members wearing firearms and so forth, we need to do everything in our power to protect and try to get more law enforcement, more people interested in it. And looking at curriculums of people that really make a difference in our community as far as the military, law enforcement and many others. But just strongly reconsider, you know, what decision you make because it has a significant impact on young, impressionable minds that, you know, can make some very foolish decisions, especially related to suicide and so forth. And really reserve those values to the parents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Alex Dudis. I actually graduated from Menter High. Currently own and operate a gym in Menter and I grew up here my entire life. So I wasn't planning on speaking tonight or anything like that. And after listening to a multitude of speakers, I thought I should say something. Now owning a gym, I train kids from five years of age to eighty plus years old. Now, a lot of the kids that I train do go to Menter Schools and go to local schools around the county and some even drive hours away to come here. And being me, I like to talk about a lot of things and I bring up politics, political stuff, and school. Now, when I went to Menter, I had six friends commit suicide. And I was a nurse and when I was nursing in the ED, I had three friends come in that overdosed and it stemmed from Menter High, it stemmed from bullying in Menter High. Now, did I personally see it? I did. And I stood up for a lot. I think you guys, if you went around and asked, I was known to stick up for those who didn't have a voice themselves. My issue with these books is not so much with the books themselves, it's with empathy. Do these kids have empathy yet? What I see is it creating more divide than good. I think those books would be good down the road a little bit. They should know that everyone's created equal and we should respect everyone. But do they have the right mindset to truly understand the books and what the impact will be? Or are we going to mold them a certain way where they're gonna have one point of view that stemmed from a young age and it's gonna be hard to kick that when really they don't have the knowledge or empathy to see both sides of the story? What we're talking about with these books is mostly current events. This isn't history. I think there needs to be time and I need, I really think you guys should take into account and talk to these kids. Because at the end of the day, I think it's gonna create more controversy and more bullying. But they should have the right to choose and I just think at the right mindset and level and knowledge, which they don't have below fifth grade, really. People are still gaining empathy at thirteen plus years of age. It showed in the recent study, I can't quote it off the top of my head here, but it was a thirteen year old girl's study, I'm sorry, a study up to thirteen year olds and it was boys and girls. And it showed that the women who turned thirteen were just beginning to grasp the full concept of empathy, which is putting yourself in someone else's shoes. Now Heather has two mommies, that's fine. But do they understand that? Or is it gonna be, hey, my mom has, or I grew up with two moms and then they're gonna get made fun of? Now, that's my concern. Is there gonna be more bullying, is there gonna be more controversy? Are they going to understand? Or are they going to look down on each other for reasons they don't truly grasp yet? That's really all I have to say is take that into account and talk to these kids. Because the things I hear, I'm going to a concert tomorrow, I'll give you an example. I have a lot of friends who are trans, who are gay, who identify as this and that. I love them to death, I see them as a human, I don't see them as anything else. And tomorrow night when we go to that concert, I'm going with a friend. I'm not going with somebody, I'm not putting a name attached to it. And she wouldn't do that either. So these books, really you gotta pay attention, talk to the kids. Really think it's gonna cause a lot more controversies and we'll see what happens, but glad to talk to you.
Thank you. Mr. Gasky, could you turn up the mics, I'm having a hard time hearing.
Thank you.
My name's Adam Anderson. I have three kids in the Menter School system. I would like to thank the board for the continued tedious work that you do. I'm proud of the Menter Schools and I'm excited, excuse me, I'm excited to see the continued progress towards diversity, inclusion and equality in the Menter School systems. I trust the education and expertise of the teachers and the board in this school system to make the appropriate decisions on reading curriculum for elementary, middle school and high school students. At no point do I think my limited information that I have in my day to day life can determine or overlap the experience and expertise teachers have. I'm one hundred percent hope that you vote to allow these books in our schools. More information is better for these students, not less. Not banning books, you need to give these children more credit than you are. They are very intelligent and wise beyond their years. And that's really the bottom line. These kids that are growing up now have unlimited potential and they're very empathetic to everybody. A little bit more information isn't gonna hurt. Let the children make their decision, bottom line. Thank you very much for your time.
Good evening, my name is Jessica Hardisty. I live at 7194 Hodgson Road. I have three daughters who are, in my opinion, so lucky to attend a school district that is caring, that is diverse and who accepts the advice and guidance from experts in education and in child development to make the decisions that you make for our students. I would like to point out that this month is the thirty-second anniversary of the passing of the Americans with Disabilities Act. So in my lifetime, George H.W. Bush signed the Americans with Disabilities Act. Do you know why that particular bill had to be passed at the federal level? Because people didn't want families with children with disabilities to have access to public schools. They did not want individuals with disabilities to be represented in history, in their textbooks, in the books on their shelves. So finally we decided as a country, we are not gonna discriminate against a child who was born with cerebral palsy or what have you. Or my dad gets in an accident and loses his arm, he can no longer be discriminated against. If your kid reads a book about a kid in a wheelchair, do they become more sensitive to that individual? Do they see the world through that person's eyes? And maybe that becomes a bad word, maybe that makes them more sensitive. Could you allow us to separate, right, from she and trans or a queer person? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm not gonna do that. Did you think you learned about queer persons in a school and you feel okay? Well, you're a queer person. It was like, man, I have a duty, that was a statement. Was your grandma right about what you're just hearing about queer organization? Wasn't that what you were taught and that is what happened? People who watch the end books never learn a basic history. People who are against progress and inclusion, never, never learn a basic one. My dogs had a little so long, they turned their own out home and then tattered out. Do you know what they think about it? No. They look at that seriously, my husband and I have been married for twenty years. They don't care, they're just kind kids who wanna be nice to people and schools need to focus on developing good citizens in addition to the basics. Thank you.
Jason Tattersall. I live at 7341 Holly Park Drive in Mentor. I have two sons that graduated from Menter High School. My concern is that the moorings upon which this nation has faced are being set.
Just kids are so stupid with their values.
The values that I was raised with, the values that I've passed on to my children have been to value life. And whatever representation that was, there was a life there to be valued. But there are also moral issues that must be established within that household. And in those moral values, there is a guardrail that is put into my children's life that I don't expect anyone else to move those guidelines for them. The things that matter to me as a man of faith, as a man of God, is the word of God. The word of God is what helps me in, is what provides me with that safety. I don't believe that it is right for anyone to not be loving, not be kind, not be generous towards anyone regardless of what their values are. But at the same time, when those things are put into my children's lives and put before them in a way that at a time where many people are talking about kids that don't have the ability to process right and wrong. And moving those guidelines outside of my knowledge, outside of the position that the administration... And here's one thing I want to say that I understand. I understand that this is not something that just comes from the Menter School boards, not just something that comes from the teachers I have, I have those, I respect the teachers. I don't believe I can put absolute trust in any person to watch over and take care of my children. I believe that's primarily my responsibility. But I will say this, that I realize also that their expression is telling nationally in the education system that they're calling you as leaders to act with. I believe there are Christian teachers, I believe there are Christian administrators that feel a muscle and feel a muscle because of the fact that their position is at risk if they speak up against some of the curriculum that is being examined and proposed for our children. And you can say, well, you know, we're not making that mandatory. Listen, if you put something before a five year old and they're not able to actually process and to be able to determine, you're exposing them to something that can very well set a course in their thinking. You know, when a child is coming up, especially in those middle school teen years, it is a very confusing, trying time for every child. They're struggling to find their identity, they're struggling to find who they are. We went through that, I know everyone goes through that. But when we offer these reasons for it that don't actually pertain to where that child is at, we lead them down a road. And I will tell you that I worked a lot with young people, a lot with young teens, I worked a lot with young adults. I have struggled in the past to find a generation like the one we're looking at now that is more shrouded in spirit darkness. They're desperate, many of them are suicidal, many of them now we're seeing across the board are graduating to a point where they're homicidal. There is a real identity crisis in our kids and I believe we're trying to put them in boxes they really don't belong in. And we're exposing them to things and telling them, this is the reason why you're feeling what you're feeling, that has absolutely nothing to do with where they actually are. You cannot do that with our kids. We need to be active, involved parents watching and taking care of our children as we go along.
I apologize, the clock was not started, I started my phone a little bit later. I'm keeping track of time on behalf of the board. I will make sure that we try to keep things as copacetic as possible. I do ask people on both sides of the room though, to allow us to do our jobs and please don't speak out and let us handle that. There's actually no rule, just to confirm that you shouldn't be speaking to each other, you should be speaking to the board. That's not a rule. You're supposed to ask questions to the board president. We ask you though, to speak to us so that we can have a civil decorum meeting so that the board and the administration can hear the concerns of the public fairly. Please, thank you.
You'd have to ask the board president.
Sorry for the interruption. Mr. Patterson, may I ask you what you do? Because it was an eloquent speech and I respect what you said and I'd like to know your experience.
My school is run by a big, put secondary, but I am also a teacher.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak?
Hello, I don't know if I can hear, let me see. Hello, my name is Andrew Pualley, 8065 Carriage Hills Drive. I've got two children. I go to Hopkins, I want to thank everybody that's here tonight. I think the main point that everyone here is missing is that everyone has children here and everyone's children come from different backgrounds and each one of us parents come from different backgrounds. I think as much as there is a divide in the public school that God should not be in here, I think sexuality is the same thing. Unfortunately, that might not be popular with some people, but in my opinion, it is up to the adults and the parents that are need to pass this on to their children, especially children that are young children. And people can look at me and say, I'm not diverse and I don't have inclusion and you're one hundred percent wrong. You don't know me. I had a gay uncle, he was married to two men, he died of AIDS. What does that do for me, right? So you would think that I'd be pro for this, but if my uncle was here today, he would be against this. He does not think, he would not think, and I'm not gonna escape from him actually, but he would not, because he never pushed it on me as a young child. He was just Uncle Sean, he was always Uncle Sean and it was always Uncle Frank. That was up to my family and I'm Catholic and I'm not pushing God here tonight. For anyone here who has God, that's fine. I have God too, but this is a public school, public schools that does not belong there. It used to and they divide it. If you want to bring it in, that's up to you. As far as sexuality goes, I think it's the same thing. You should probably wait till they're mature enough to understand stuff. Kids think of all kinds of stuff and we deal with all kinds of problems as far as information goes with young children in our neighborhood, misinformation. So I think one of the gentlemen here tonight talked about making sure that that is being presented correctly to the children and what's there and how that message is being taught. I know from me and my wife that we give that message ourselves, okay? That comes out and it's our responsibility to make sure that they understand who everybody is. And I think that's where the diversity and inclusion is for everybody. It comes back to the parents, it's not up to the school. And, excuse me, inclusion also and diversity to these books that you are bringing to school, where do they talk about me? I'm not here to push my agenda on anybody. I'm hetero, I've been married for gonna be eighteen years this month and there's not a single book that talks about me and my lifestyle to pass on to the other kids. Tell me one that there is. Tell me one, one of the other little books that was very inappropriate that talked about discriminating against your genitalia. Where's the one that says, hey, you know what? Where's the pro? I'm actually proud of what I am and I'm proud of being what I like. If this is a full conversation of inclusion and diversity, then it should be. It should be on both sides. I agree with the people that are saying we should talk from both sides, but where are those books? They're not, it's biased. It's diverse, for sure, but it... It's diverse, for sure, but it is biased. And any of the training that any of us have had in our professional lives, we go through diversity training, we go through inclusion, and I'm sorry I'm saying that wrong, I'm not a very good public speaker, but at the end of the day, it's a one-sided story. I'm also Irish. Does anybody know that? No, nobody does. Where are we talking about? The Irish slaves that came into this country? It's one-sided, okay? And it is a part of history. I'm also English. Where was it, the slavery that I had from my ancestors? I'm only one or two generations off the boat over here, okay? I'm not prominent, I don't come from old money. Where are those stories about me and my family and how they can share that diversity with everybody else? That's what I have to say. I think everyone here loves their kids, and I think everyone has an opportunity, and I think you should let the parents vote on this and table it.
Thank you.
Last call. All right, we're gonna move on. Thank you.